Alrighty, it's time for the Town Meeting Program. This is Monday, March 29th. JR Lewis with you on K L A M. Very glad to be able to be here after a while on your on-demand local talk show. Meaning when you have an idea for a talk show, let us know. You've got a guest in mind, you want to be a guest? He tried to say be a guest. Just get in touch with us. And then there are of course, people that we find out about on our own to visit with, that either get in touch with us, or in this case, I thought, you know, we haven't talked to Gay Wellman in a while. So I reached out and she's always happy to spend some time with us here. So that's our guest. Gay Wellman is with the Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska operation. Is always a great and very informative guest. And the show, the Town Meeting Talk Show, is brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, which is a great ally of local radio, bringing you your local talk show and a number of other programs, in addition to just being a very valuable supporter of local radio. And why not? They're your local provider of cellphone and wireless data services. So our visit with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska focuses predominantly on one aspect of the services they offer, the Caregiving 101 programs. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 of them coming up in the next quarter between April and June. So she's going to give us an overview of those. And of course, what's very interesting about these COVID-tormented times is that an ironic benefit of the pandemic has been the moving of these classes to the online format, which ironically gives more people the opportunity to participate than when they were all in person. And as you'll hear, the benefit of maybe considering participating in these different seminars and classes, and each one's about 90 minutes long, a benefit can be the idea of planning ahead. If you have a loved one who's in, say, the early stages of having Alzheimer's or dementia, or maybe it's a condition that runs in your family and you think that you or someone in your family may be vulnerable to it, planning ahead and thinking about things in advance, like making decisions with that person about, you know, while they're still more lucid about when it's time for them to stop driving, or how key decisions should be made, or you know, particularly something difficult like, when is the right time to go into assisted living? You can talk about that within your family. And again, being prepared for these difficult things in advance can ease some of the, you know, the obvious unpleasantness that will come when these decisions ultimately have to be made. So we'll learn about that. And at the end, we didn't have time to cover some of the other things besides caregiving 101, but at the end of the program, I'll go over some of those other assets for you. So we hope you'll be able to stay tuned and enjoy this show with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska on the Town Meeting Program. Gay, really nice to have you with us again. First off, how are you doing? How does the day find you?
Well, the day is finding me pretty well. We've had some gorgeous days here. I don't know about you all, but this morning it was cloudy again. I'm not quite sure what it's doing at this point, but it's been beautiful and we definitely have the feeling of spring. The snow bunting are returning and that to us is a real sign. We still have a lot of snow and from what I gather, they're having snow in Palmer area anyway, and are expecting more. And so we usually get their weather a couple of days later. So we know we're probably going to get some more snow, but it's still, it's different this time of year, isn't it?
Yeah, well, you know, the funny thing is spring kind of can't make up its mind in Alaska. It's like, here I come. No, actually, I'm kidding. No, I'm not. Yes, I am. No, I'm not. Yes, I am.
We just have to know that, okay, the world is still functioning the way it ought to in some places anyway. And we can hope for the greening at least sometime in May is what we usually see.
Yeah. Now, we have with Alzheimer's Resource, you and I have talked a few times when there's been something special coming up, but there's a lot that's going on just kind of all the time, different classes and events around the state. And we talked before about how they're being offered on Zoom, a lot of them now, which has been interesting because it makes it possible for folks to attend that might normally not be able to or not be as interested. And while registration is required, it's still something you invite largely anyone who's interested to do. So let's, let's go over some of these categories in the ongoing, you know, the ongoing offerings of Alzheimer's Resource. First off, caregiving 101 seems to be sort of big and central to the whole thing.
Right. And we, at one point, when we first started doing Zoom, we had a whole bunch, I mean, all of us were doing one a week practically, and it was, it was a bit overwhelming. So we've kind of, kind of reduced it a wee bit, but it's still a lot of really good offerings that people can easily get to. And if they don't understand Zoom, it's possible to do it just with your phone. You have to use, you have to use the link, the right link and all that and the right phone numbers, but it's really easy to register. This information that we're going to be going over, JR, is easily found on our website for any of you that are doing that. That's that W W A L Z Alaska dot org for any of these. So it's really valuable to go over them though. The 101s are what we think of as the classes for both family caregivers and professional people and anyone who's interested. They're basically tailored though for family caregivers. In other words, by family, we mean friends, anybody who's actually directly involved with. And again, it can be, you can be long distance, like I'm taking care of my sister who is down in North Carolina, and I consider myself a caregiver for her, even though I certainly obviously can't get to her. And but we're doing, you know, I'm having to think well about her and things like that. So these classes are really valuable information for just anybody who's interested in learning a little bit more, how do you support folks? So this next quarter, and we usually offer a new calendar of calendar and events. That's what it's, this classes and events from around, for around the state. And as you mentioned, because they're online with Zoom, anybody can attend who has access to internet. And I know in some areas that's difficult, but I really encourage people to find ways to attend some of these things. So first off, on April, because it's done by quarters, so we're looking at next quarter, which is April, May, and June. So in April, we have, it looks like four offerings. Yeah. The GEMS, which is a wonderful way of thinking about the skills that make a difference with folks, and they're different levels or different stages.
What does that stand for, GEMS?
GEMS, okay. What it stands for is it's a program that TIPUS knows, it's a way of thinking about the different stages. So what she's done is she's done this thing, instead of staying stage one or level, mid-level or early level, that sort of thing, early stage, what she's done is she's given each stage a gem. So like sapphires are what you and I are supposed to be, right? In other words, we're supposed to be functioning with relatively fully, fully, full deck.
It's a, it's a relative thought, but I get where you're, I get what you mean in seriousness. Okay.
That our frontal lobes and the rest of our brain is functioning for the most part pretty well. Then the next one that she talks about, and I'll just go over a few of these because I, well, I have them memorized, you certainly think I should by this time. But the next one is what they call, she calls the diamond stage. And that's your early stage for folks. And you know, that's a stage that a lot of us can get to. We may not have dementia, but there's going to be days when I'm not thinking my best. Maybe I'm under a lot of stress, or maybe I'm not sleeping well, or you know, whatever it is, maybe, maybe my, I'm off on medication, that my medications are doing something funny, or maybe I'm sick, you know? And so I don't have the full ability to roll with the punches, so to speak. So if somebody comes at me with, and they're, they're being grumpy at me, or they're not responding to a thing that I need to have taken care of right now, I'm going to be a diamond. I'm going to be in that stage.
Gotcha.
Okay, but it's temporary, right? Now, people with dementia, if that's what's developing for them, it doesn't, doesn't go away with getting more rest or any of that stuff. So, and there's each of these stages, and I'm not going to go through them today, but each of these stages have, are gem levels. So she does diamond, let's see, she does sapphire, diamond, emerald, amber, and pearl. So the five major stages of, that we label. And so with pearl being the last one, and isn't that lovely? Because basically what she's saying is, you know, by calling them gems, in any of these stages, we are gems. Doesn't matter where you are, you're a gem. Okay, so it puts a little bit more positive spin on it than levels and stages and stuff.
So the April event then is under, in the GEMS program, using skills that make a difference. Can you define that a little?
Well, for each of the, each of the levels. It's just another way of talking about stages and levels. So what we're looking at is what are the losses in each of those levels? What, what do people, what do they usually experience? What kind of behaviors can you expect? And what are some of the things that you need to learn as a caregiver to help a person during that time? To support them in the best way possible. So for each of those, and so they'll be going over in more detail, that sort of thing. It's basically the same lecture that we give when we talked about levels and stuff. It's just that TIPUS uses these gems.
All right. And that's Tuesday, April 6th. Then 10 days later on the 16th, you have one called meaningful activities.
Yes, and that is very important to learn. I keep hearing about that in, in any of the support groups that I'm doing, and I'm doing, we'll talk about that in a bit, but I'm doing some for partners now. And one of the big issues is how do I, how do I help my partner who has dementia do things? Be involved, you know? You know, what if they only want to sit in front of a TV and they really need to? Because one of the things that we find, and I was just hearing about that again today, is that the more, not, not that you want to fill their day all the time, but if they can be involved in meaningful things, and by meaningful would mean not just playing around with things, so that can be useful, but it's, it's things that they find meaningful, things that they used to like to do. And maybe they can't quite do it now because they've forgotten how to get started, or they don't have the attention, or they don't know how to use their tools or whatever, depending on what gem level they are. You're going to want to set up things, you need to have different skills to be able to set up a day so that they can have at least part of the day that have some meaningful activities. And that includes getting outdoors whenever you can, you know, being involved in things that they find enjoyable.
All right. And then you wait, you wait about four days, then April 20th, you get into it. And one that's kind of tough and emotional for seniors in general, I can only imagine the challenges of when dementia is involved, and that's driving and dementia.
Absolutely. That is a big issue for a lot of people. And you know, it's funny, it's interesting, we want to put it off as long as possible, especially if you've got someone who's resisting any efforts you're making to get them to stop driving. But this is something that needs to be dealt with pretty early on in the disease process. Because when you think about it, it's not just the mechanics of driving. So one of the clues that we have, or one of the tricks that you have is you don't want to say, Dad, you can't drive anymore. Because he's going to be real literal. Remember, any of you that've heard me talk about what some of these, some of the things that happen to our brains when it's not getting, not clear, it's clear, is that we take things very literally. It's very concrete thinking. And so if you tell me I can't drive, I certainly can. I know how, you know, the mechanics of it is, is part of the long-term procedural memory that goes, one of the last things to go. So yeah, they physically can do it, but what they don't have is the perception, they don't have the judgment, they don't have the awareness, they don't have the ability to put aside, you know, to focus. All the skills, we need our full brains when we're driving.
Oh, sure.
And that's why the things of talking on the phone, or fiddling with your radio, or having too much alcohol or whatever on board, or not getting enough sleep. All of that stuff is putting us in a different gem level when you think about it that way, temporarily, but it's affecting our ability to drive safely. And so, but if you have someone with dementia, it's really, really important that you get a handle on this. And for some people, it's a real battle. And you don't want it to be a battle.
Even when dementia isn't involved, you hear, you hear stories about how challenging that can be.
We, fortunately, my dad, well, he didn't have dementia, but he, he had one real close call, and that was enough for him. He had, you know, a couple not quite so close calls, and then he had this one that was pretty scary for him. He was by himself, but he, he said, when he got back home, he said, here, gave my mom, my stepmom the keys and said, I'm not driving anymore.
Well, you know, given as much of a challenge as there can be, you know, in general, to have a program like this where the, the information can be provided, and a lot of the pitfalls too, that are potential in trying to deal with that can be laid out, that sounds like it's going to be a good program. Now, this next one has an interesting title, Understanding Supported Decision Making Agreements for Seniors. What is, how's that?
You know, that is great. You know, we sometimes change the titles of some of these programs, and I think in this one, what we're talking about, it's really important to how do you, how do you get folks to agree to things such as driving? There's things you can do ahead of time. The sooner you get into on this, the better. So even before, you know, like, I should be doing this with my husband right now. It's okay, if you see me getting to the point, I hesitate with him because he doesn't like my driving anyway. But it's one of those things you want, okay, how are we going to do this one? How do we, how do we get seniors, as we get to be seniors, to agree to, okay, if this starts happening, I agree to not, to not drive? This is an example. Or when this starts to happen, I agree that you probably need to be helping me with this more than you are. So how do we, how do we do this thing? How do we make agreement? How do we help each other make those agreements? Especially when you have somebody who's in the beginning stages of dementia. If they're farther into the process, it's too late.
Yeah. All right. So that's interesting. It's kind of like thinking through some of the possibilities in advance then, and being able to fall back on that and, and say, you know, this, this is what we decided type of thing, and go from there.
Right. And here, and at least then I know I have a better idea of what you are wanting to do. I may not agree with you, but at least I know, so that, that point in time when I do have to take over making more of the decisions for you, I can do it the way we're supposed to do it, which is based on what you want, not what I want.
Okay. So that's on April 26th, and then two, three weeks off, we move ahead to Friday, May 14th. And again, all of this is detailed on the website or available for the asking, but when does forgetting become a worry? Now, you and I talk about this just about every time, the difference between forgetting and, and when it might mean something a little bit more. So what's happening in there?
Yeah, and that's what we talk about, you know, what's the difference between normal forgetting, normal aging forgetting, and what's, when do we need to get more concerned? And so they'll go into more detail about that. You know, what are some of the signs that indicate, okay, whether it's for yourself, one of the things that's happening that's not on this program, not on this list, but it's really an exciting new program that we're, we're just developing. We got a special grant for it, and we have someone who's been working really hard to develop this. It's a program that came out of the lower 48 for folks that are worried about it, but it's going to be like a brain, brain exercises training program. And yes, we've had some of those, but this is even more, it's like, it's called yoga for the brain.
Oh, wow.
And it's a, it's apparently a pretty extensive program, and there's an extensive screening that you have to go through in order to be a member. It's going to be a long, you know, it's like, it's, I forget what they said, like more than six weeks kind of thing that you make a commitment to it. But it's the kind of thing that we hear a lot from people, you know, people will call up and say, oh, I'm kind of worried, I seem to be forgetting things more. And so that's when we do the memory screening. You know, the memory screening is the first thing you want to do when you're doing that to find that out. Most of us, as we grow older, we're going to be losing brain cells. But they're, they're not, it's spotty and it's little. I think I mentioned one time that, that I know I have with some other folks, is that I had a brain scan, I had a seizure, just something happened that they thought it was a seizure of some sort. And so they did a brain scan and, and an MRI of my brain. And I saw the results of that, and I'm looking at it, and they say, hey, there's a lot of little black dots in there. Do I need to worry? And the doctor said, no, 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 it's pretty normal at your age. And I'm pushing 80. So it's like, it's not unusual for a person of your age to have little black dots like that. You've got teeny tiny little vessels in our brains that, oh, you know, they get, they wear out. And it's not a big deal. It's not like I'm having strokes or anything. It's just that, you know, it's little bitty, tiny, tiny kind of things that are going on. And, but it, that's why I sometimes find myself, especially if I'm tired or anything like that, where I can't find a word, or I'll be talking and it's like, oh goodness, I can't remember where I was going with this.
Geez, that happens to me all the time. That's been happening to me for the last five years.
I know, I know. That's normal. That's normal. Okay. So when do I need to start worrying more? And that's it. You know, like if I don't, I can't find my keys, how many of us have that problem? You know, oh my goodness, but we find it. Or you don't remember somebody's name. For some of it, that's a chronic thing anyway. So you know, the fact that I even more can't remember people's names, like I was just trying to remember my grandson's name, and it's like, I couldn't remember it.
Yeah.
But you know, it's obvious going to pop back in, and it did. But you know, it may take longer to do that. But anyway, I'm just saying that it's pretty normal to have, have forgetting kind of things. But when do we need to start worrying? And one of the things about this is that it's, you know, with dementia, it's not just memory loss. We're talking about, there's things like personality changes. It's things like not, you know, becoming more rigid in our, you know, not being able to go with the flow, so to speak. It's our perception of things, you know? There's all kinds of reasons, or things that are going on in the brain besides just memory loss. That's the one we tend to think of the most.
So you're going to be looking for some co-occurring things besides just, just that. And again, this, on the 14th, when does forgetting become a worry? This, this will be a good. And these all look like they're about 90 minutes long, so it'd be a fair amount of time to, to really dig deep. And, and then on the 18th, this is what, this is one now that I remember being covered in that HBO series a while back on wandering, wandering in dementia.
Right, right. What's going on there? That one's an interesting one because it's, you know, can we even think about, instead of the word wandering, what they're recommending, we begin thinking about is reframing that to searching. So rather than thinking, okay, what, what are they wandering around for? That's sort of a, we can't really get a handle on that. But one of the things you're doing when you're working with someone with dementia is you're trying to figure out what's going on for them? Where are they in, you know, why are they doing what they're doing? You can't ask them, they're not going to know, but you get to try to figure that out. So wandering, what time of year, day is it? What else is going on around them? You know, are they used to going out at a certain time of day? Like if it's happening on Sunday morning, well, what are they searching for? What are they looking for? So searching gives us a clue, I need to be figuring out, what are they searching for? What are they wanting? What are they doing here? Are they needing more exercise? Are they needing to go to the bathroom? Are they wanting to, you know, are they just needing to go see their Aunt Millie? Or is this somebody, there's a wonderful story that goes with this, that I love this story. The guy got out there and he was lost. The family called, they had to get police involved trying to find him. And although a lovely policeman found him and knew enough to not get upset or anything, but found out that what he was doing, he was looking for a florist shop. Because he'd remembered that it was his wife's birthday, and he always, he remembered that he always got her flowers. And so he'd gone out to find her flowers. And so when the policeman heard that, learned that, he took her, he took him to a flower shop and helped him buy flowers for his wife. Isn't that beautiful? So you know, it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's not like they're trying to escape, though sometimes that can be it. You know, they're tired of being with that, they need to get out, I gotta go. You know, I think those of us that have been going through this pandemic thing, you're understanding what that's about, right?
Well, and actually, you know, that, that couples right into the next one, the one on the 24th, coping with social isolation and loneliness. Now, that's not just a COVID thing, that's, that's an Alzheimer's or dementia thing?
Right. And that's the one that affects, my hope is that one of the silver linings from this pandemic is that there's going to be more of you, more people that aren't having to deal with trying to take care of somebody at home and being isolated because of that. But that you're getting a feeling, you get a sense of what they've been, these families have been going through. You know, that, that, these are families, and I've heard this from many families, you know, they're saying, hey, hadn't made a bit of difference to me, because that's what I'm doing anyway. And the challenge is that what happens with this is that friends and family and people around them pull away. Don't go and visit. And this isn't just with dementia. This is when you have somebody who's got cancer, think about it. You know, think about that. What do we do when somebody's having a bad time?
So it sounds like the support that's going to be offered in this is not so much about the maybe isolation or loneliness that the person with the dementia feels, but what happens to the caregivers and, you know, because they're going to be, they may be under stress, you know, the caregivers may seem depressed or snippy or sad or something like that, you know, it's going to, it's going to have an impact on everybody that's associated. And, and because of all that stigma and so forth, what, what I hear you saying here is that it's actually these caregivers that end up being isolated.
Both. It can be both.
Yeah.
Because the person, you know, as you say, the families can get to the point where all they want to do is put grandma in the back, your back room. I don't want to have to deal with this. This is too much. She's saying the same thing over and over and over and over again, she does it again, I'm going to kill her. You know, or at least, you know, do something not so good.
Yeah, yeah. Speaking figuratively, yeah.
Right, right, of course. Anyway, though it does happen.
Yeah. Okay. And then you jump into June, and again, obviously that's a way off. All this information is available to look up online or to be told about over the phone. But you have one, your first one in June is called Being the Decision Maker.
Right. And that one's similar to what these other Understanding Supported Decision Making Agreements. It's a little different, you know, because it's a whole, what you're looking at is, boy, I'm having to take over some stuff I don't want to have to do. You know, it's a POA for my sister, I've got power of attorney for my sister, I'm supposed to be doing her taxes. I haven't done it. I haven't done it.
I don't want to do my own taxes.
I know, for three years I haven't done it. Oh my gosh. So I've got to get on that.
Okay. And so coping with the challenges of that, that increased responsibility then, is that the thrust of it? All right.
And how do you make those decisions? What do you base them on? There's legal, there's legal definitions of what our role is when we take on those kind of decisions. What's the way of doing it that's, that's most humane? And there's times when, hey, I know my sister didn't want to go into nursing home or assisted living home, but she had to.
Yeah. I mean, if the level of care needed goes beyond what, what a layperson can do, sure.
So it's about that. How do you do this? What are the decisions? There's a lot of decisions out there that we don't realize we're having to make. You know, we kind of do it automatically for ourselves, but when you try, starting to do that for a loved one, hey, it's another whole piece of wax.
Sure. Then you move on into mid-June, and you've got one called The Related Dementias in A D R D. What is, first off, what's A D R D?
Alzheimer's Disease and Related Dementias. Because everybody thinks of Alzheimer's as being the one and only, but there's all kinds of dementias. And so with, that's how it's got, gets referred to, just to help people understand what we're talking about. And that's the one I'll be doing. Each one of these is being done by different people, different of our education specialists. All of us are, are well knowledgeable and they're all going to be good, a little bit different approach maybe, but all of them are going to be excellent. I can say that without, without, you know, totally qualifying that.
Yeah. Now, just, just, how about the Cliff Notes version of what then are the dementias that are not Alzheimer's?
Okay, you've got Lewy body, you've got Parkinson's with dementia, you've got, you've got, let's see, I was just doing this with some other, some other people. There's a bunch of them out there. There's a regular, oh, there's frontal temporal. See, that was one of those glitches, I had to wait a minute. Frontal temporal, which is what affecting, it's kind of like if you get bumped on the head and you get, you get brain, a brain damage. So what's going on with that? So, so what's going on with that? How that's different? So what we're looking at is the similarities and what are the differences? You know, a lot of people get hung up on, oh, I need a definition. I need a real diagnosis. And yes, I can help, but it's not totally necessary. But it's useful to, it's useful to know to help you figure out what's going on. And it may be that one approach will work with one kind or it won't with another, which is one way of finding out whether that's the kind they've got. So you've got Lewy body. You've got Parkinson's with dementia. You've got, um, you've got, um, Alzheimer's, of course. You have frontal temporal and you have vascular. Those are the main five. And then there's a bunch of little ones that, that aren't very common. There's something called Kreutzfeldt-Jakob, which is, uh, you know, it's like, whoa, who ever heard of that? But you know what? Uh, several years ago, I did hear, there was a family that called us. That happens real fast. Uh, they called me. He'd start, just started, uh, showing some signs and he was dead within six, six months.
Holy cow.
Much different than some of these others. It happens real fast. So again, it can be helpful to have some idea of what's happening. Most doctors will say, you know, when you first go into them, they'll give you what they call a diagnosis of dementia. But what they mean is it's a dementia of some sort. We haven't figured it out.
What is it?
Don't know enough.
What is it again, I guess, kind of in summary then, that defines what a dementia is? If Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's is a type of dementia, these other things that you said are types of dementias, what, what, what constitutes a dementia disorder?
What we're looking for are the signs of brain deterioration, which is any of the eight, um, parts of our, we talked about the eight different areas of the brain that the brain does for us, the functions of the brain of our cognition, which is memory, perception, uh, understanding, um, uh, let's see. You know, I should have them at the top of my fingers, my, and then my fingers here, but I don't. You know, that's the kind of thing that I use my cheap sheet for. But it's all those different things, uh, organization. And so one of the things we teach in Savvy class, which we'll talk about in a minute here, is what those different areas of the brain actually do for us? And what are the signs that there's something happening in each of those areas that means that we have dementia? Dementia, in order to get a full, get a diagnosis of some form of dementia, we have to have more than memory loss. You have to have at least one or two of the other areas of the brain that are showing deterioration.
Yeah. So even these, so, so, you know, that's, that's interesting too, you know, how broad the categories are. Cause you mentioned, for example, TB, what is, what is it? I, I remember TBI, traumatic brain injury.
That's right.
Can, can happen in a young person and, and result, if, if there is damage there, that could result in some of these other things and, and that relates to, the family has to relate to it, you know, with a lot of very similar, uh, the need for skills.
Exactly, exactly. So that's what I'm saying that you, you know, even if you're not dealing with someone with dementia, it's a lot of these skills go, go across the board.
Sure.
You know, I, I, you know, I think you've heard me talk before about the fact that I've, I've, uh, worked with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. Birth defects, birth, you know, prenatal exposure to alcohol essentially.
Sure.
A lot of us stuff is the same. Now, there's differences, obviously. Uh, it, and again, it all depends on what part of the brain is being affected by whatever it is that's going on. Whether it's a vascular dementia where it's essentially lots, lots of stroke type activities. A lot of people have a major stroke and then they, they can recover somewhat from that. And then they start having what we call mini strokes.
Right.
And after a bit, it starts collecting and that's, that becomes progressive. And that's about, that's why they, they really encourage us all to make, you know, the prevention piece. It's not really prevention, but, um, because it doesn't stop you necessarily to, whatever is good for your heart is good for your brain, you know, that piece.
Sure.
But that doesn't stop you from getting a dementia of, that has a, a, a cause in the sense of like Alzheimer's with the plaques and tangles and with Lewy body and some of these others that have a real cause like that, a disease process going on.
And the genetic component too, which is very strong.
All that stuff. It doesn't stop you from getting that necessarily. But what it does do is it gives you, it builds your, um, capacity. So yes, you may be losing some brain cells, but by doing these brain games and by doing, eating well and by exercising and socializing and being involved in things and not sitting on your butt and stuff like that, by staying engaged, all those wonderful things that we've heard. But not about prevention, but what they do do is rebuild our capacity.
Yeah.
So that we're, when we lose some, we've got more, we're building more to help us deal with the symptoms.
Is it associated with slowing the progression as well?
In the sense of slowing the progression of the, of the symptoms.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily stop this progression, except like with vascular.
Right.
Uh, you know, if you start getting, taking control of your cholesterol and taking control, you know, exercising enough and doing all those good things, that you may be stopping the, the slowing down that process. But I don't think they've said that it's stopping the progress of the plaques and tangles getting, building. Okay. But what you are doing is helping you not have as many of the symptoms. And I don't know about you, but that matters to me.
Yeah, yeah.
And it also matters to me. You know, it's kind of like what we say about medication because they do not have any medications that actually stop the process of Alzheimer's and Lewy body and some of these others, the Parkinson's things. They've got medications that can slow it down and that's valuable. Okay. So this is what we're talking about. That's one reason why it might be useful to know which type of, um, dementia you have.
Well, and this, again, getting back to this, this, uh, program on the 12th, um, about the related dementias, this is a good opportunity for, excuse me, anybody who's curious about that to be able to, uh, find out what some of those other dementias are and the, and the circumstances in which they might occur. And then on the 15th, wow, you, uh, saving the challenging one for last. This is good. This is, this is one of the, the biggest, you know, not just within the context of dementias, but, but, uh, you know, a life that's winding down in general.
Yeah.
Or possibly even somebody who's, who's, uh, younger, I suppose, in some circumstances. But it's called the What, When and How of Assisted Living. I would imagine there's a lot, you know, people trying to, trying to navigate that on their own have, have, is, is, that's excruciating. And, and to be able to go into the situation with some foreknowledge, I imagine this is pretty valuable for that.
Yes, yes, it is. And, and, uh, you know, it's one of those that we avoid.
Yeah.
You know, it's one of those that we say, well, I've told, I've promised my husband I would never put him in a home.
Well, it's easy to do when you don't understand what you might be up against. Yeah.
What's that? What's that?
Yeah. So it's easy to say that when you don't know what you might eventually be up against.
Exactly. You know, there's that other part of a marriage vow which says for better or worse.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, my sister didn't want to go into a home, but you know what? Guess what? There was no way that we could let her stay where she was. Her friends couldn't keep taking care of her. And so, you know, there's one way of saying it, too bad, so sad. That's a little rough, but you know, there's other ways of saying it not much nicer. And that's what we did. You know, I wish, and that's where people's knows thing of, I'm so sorry. I'm really sorry. I did that over and over again with Nancy. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry. We can't let you go back to your trailer. I know how much you want to. But it just isn't going to happen. And I'm really sorry. And that's what you, you learn how to say those things. And you want to be careful what you promise because you don't know. It takes a lot to take care of somebody in the later stages. Now, if you know they're going to die before they get to those, great. But, and, and there's, there's, you know, you mentioned the, the Alzheimer's project. One of the things that, that one of the folks that have the dementia, his section, he was in a middle stage. And he was talking about, he was going to kill himself.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, boy. Okay. And I've heard other people say that, not just about dementia. I had another friend who had a, had her husband had a progressive kind of, uh, different kind of disease that was affecting his brain. And, um, he had told her that that's what he was going to do. And of course, when the time came, he didn't. Either he didn't remember or whatever, you know, I don't know. But, um, he didn't do it. So she was left having to eventually put him into a home.
So what I'm hearing here then is that people may have the opportunity on the 15th to learn kind of from two different perspectives. First all, first of all, the person who's, who's dead set against it, maybe learning that that may be too hardcore, uh, a position and that the situations may arise and therefore you should be prepared where, where assisted living is necessary. And then on the other side of it, somebody who realizes that it's necessary, but feels so horribly guilty, you, uh, may be able to assuage some of that.
Yeah, exactly. And so the what, when and how, and the, the, the whole thing of how do you, what do you do to find a good place? Cause you don't want to put them in some place that's awful. And that's why you don't want to wait.
Right.
Even if you think you're not going to have to do it, you really don't want to get familiar with what's out there. What's available to you? And the sooner you do that, the better you're going to be able when the time comes, if it comes, you know? Doesn't mean you're going to, kind of like fire to prevention. You know, just because I learned how to protect my, you know, where I'm going to go when a fire happens, doesn't mean there's going to be a fire.
Right.
Or, you know, you can do the one about sexual, sexual education in school. Just because you educate the kids how, how sex, you know, prevention stuff, uh, you know, sex, doesn't mean they're going to go out and start having a lot of sex. They're having it anyway. So it's the same kind of thing. Okay. So it's about preparing and how do you do that? Who do you call to find out about things like that?
Or getting to know what some of the facilities are nearby or whatever. And, and even if you don't end up using it with your own family, learning that information, uh, can to pass on to, to friends or coworkers or something like that can also be useful.
Exactly. And one of the things that's coming out of this is that, um, we're working on a, and one thing I'm, I'm trying to do, again, because of my experience with my sister, is going to be setting up a new webinar on, um, how do you, how do you, um, support your loved one when they are in an assisted living home? You know, how do I, what do, how do I approach the staff that's taking care of them in a way that is going to make things better than worse?
Sure.
How do I check out what is exactly happening in that home? What do I need to do to get a reliable spy, so to speak? You know, in this time of COVID, it was really became even more evident. Because some of us, like I have friends, Nancy had friends down in North Carolina that were going in and visiting with her. And so they could see. They could experience what the lunchroom was like. They could experience what, what some of her activities were like. And, and they could get her out and do that sort of thing. With COVID, that hap, that stopped.
Sure.
And, uh, so what do we need to do as a caregiver? How, how can I stay connected so that I know that my loved one is getting the best care possible? How do I support the staff?
Yeah.
And so that's what we're going, they were developing one of that. So keep an eye out for that.
Yeah. Well, and you know, it, it, you, another good point that you bring up is that, that idea of learning how to interact with the staff at one of these facilities. Cause I could envision situations where, you know, uh, the, the patient is, uh, or the, the resident rather is, is, uh, you know, a fairly standard, say straightforward case, but there are family members who treat the staff badly and just come in and are full-on terrorists. And that's going to, I mean, even though we'd like to believe that anybody that is a professional caregiver is, is a, a pillar of not being able to be influenced by that. We're all human beings and, and there's a risk of that kind of thing having an impact on the quality of care.
When you think about how, how much are these folks getting paid that are doing this care?
Yeah.
And many of them are from, uh, uh, you know, are people of color. And what have they had to deal with all their lives?
Sure.
How am I approaching them because they're a person of color? How do I feel about that? That my sister's being taken care of somebody who's black? You know, is that affecting how I am approaching that person who's black? You better bet your bottom dollar it is.
Sure.
And so I need to get in touch with those feelings. I need to know how I'm approaching someone. So I'm not stepping on toes and making, uh, making mistakes that, that are offensive.
Yeah.
It's, you know, there's another whole issue here. Um, I think I've shared, I don't know whether I've shared with you guys or not, but my sister and, and, uh, her, her place, just as this is an example of one of the things that can come up is that, um, Nancy had not been able to be around her friends. She hadn't been stimulated much, uh, you know, she'd been isolated. So she didn't have the, uh, connections, the intimacy connections that we all need, which is not just sexuality, not just physical connection, though that's really important. But she didn't have the intellectual connection. She didn't have the, uh, friendship emotional connection. And she didn't have the spiritual connection that she used to have with her friends. She was cut off from all those things. So they moved her into memory care where there was other people at her level where she'd been before, she'd been more advanced and then most of the other people there. So she wasn't connecting with them. But she moved into this memory care unit and she found a woman who was very responsive. They became really good friends. And within a matter of a couple of weeks, they were in bed together. Now, my sister, you know, I'm, I'm founding, I know, I know for a fact, you know, I'm pretty, as much as I can know, that was not her natural inclination. But because she'd been cut off from all those things, all those other ways of being, being loved, so to speak, being intimate, you know, being close to, that was the only one that was left. And whether she was the one initiated it or not, or whether it was other lady, you know, I don't know. But what did the agency have to do? And how did they treat that?
Yeah.
Big issue. And you know what happened with that is on the surface, when I talked with the staff there, it sounded like they had a kind of a cultural path, uh, the culture was, at least at the top, was that, oh, it's okay, as long as the families are okay with it. We're not going to interfere with it that much. But when it got down to it, the reality was that some of their staff, they hadn't done the training for their staff. So I think there was a bunch of stuff coming out at Nancy because she, she had some pretty heavy duty issues going on with them a week before she broke her foot. She fell and broke her foot. And thank God she did because we got to move her into another place where she's taking, you know, I didn't want her to break her foot, but you know, it's one of those things that sometimes somebody takes over and helps us out here.
So all these strategies then, you know, that you're talking about to have those. And I mean, they talk about, uh, the importance of doing that when you've got somebody in, in the hospital even.
Exactly.
That, uh, I mean, you've got incredibly hardworking, talented, skilled, caring doctors and nurses and everybody, say, in, in a conventional hospital setting that are all doing their best every moment that they're on shift. But they are human. They're, they're not, um, you know, from Krypton. And, and, uh, so to the extent that we can to be advocates for our own patient. I mean, we had to go through this with, with Robbie, uh, you know, when he had his cardiac arrest and was in a coma for three, four days and then that whole recovery period. And, and we trusted everybody at Providence that was working on him, but we took notes and, 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 you know, every now and then we'd stick our head out the door and say, is it time for something or other? And the extremely busy nurse would be, oh, yeah, yeah, I'll be right there. So.
Right, right. And, and, and nurses are paid better than caregivers in assisted living homes.
Sure.
AIDS are not necessarily in hospitals. So again, when you think about how these people are being appreciated or not, oh, and, and, and you're right, these are skills. And that's where, that's one that we're trying to develop. That one won't be something that's talked about on this, on the one on the 15th of June, which is what, when and how. That's different. But this one that we want to develop is strictly talking, you know, talking about that sort of thing. How do you, what do you need to do in order to be able to, um, handle, help, help staff? And in many ways, you know, what's interesting to me, it's really no different than how do I help my loved one when they're in a different, different gem state?
Well, it sounds like a lot of basic golden rule, you know? I mean, everybody taking care of, of a, of a resident is supposed to be on the same team. So how can we all, this idea of how can we all be part of the team? How can we all play, uh, our, rise to our specialty or our role in this thing? You know, it's the threads in the tapestry. The caregiver provides a certain amount of expertise. They may have counselors that do emotional things. Got family members do certain things, friends do certain things. Let's all work synergistically, not get in each other's way, support one another.
Right. And maybe that support means stepping up and saying, uh, hey, you know, that wasn't okay what you just did.
Yeah, yeah.
In a way that makes sense, you know, um, you know, it's like, okay, whether it's modeling or finding a way to say, whoa, I think you, you're, you're in a different gem state here. Finding humor is often useful. I had a friend who said she used to, she, she was really great at teasing on the square. And so what she meant by that is she would let you know when you'd done something wrong, but she did it in a teasing way. And so you didn't even realize it until later. Said, oh, she just gave me a message there.
Yeah. Well, this is, this, this is going to be a very interesting quarter in terms of educational opportunities. And that's not actually all that's available. I think after you and I wrap up, I'll go over what some of these other things are in, uh, in, in post-production. But for the purposes of our conversation, anything, these are all the caregiving 101 items coming up in, in the next quarter. What, uh, you know, what, kind of in summary or put a bow on it?
Okay. Well, I recommend everybody get involved with these. These are, anybody and everybody. Cause, cause any of these are, are valuable for you at some level. Okay. So it's very easy to register. There's a little box. You get to the, this website. Yes, there's a little box that says, register here. You just press on that and it's asking you a couple of questions. Your name, your contact information, and then you'll get the link. Okay. And some of us do more than that, but some of us, that's all, you'll, you'll get the link and, and it'll tell you what phone numbers to use, that sort of thing. I did want to mention just real briefly here, and maybe what you're saying is that we don't have time to do this, but the professional webinars, there's a section, uh, another corner of, of this page, this classes that talks about the professional webinars. And those are ones that come out of, um, come out of, um, Juno mainly, uh, but it's still webinars. And each, each month, there's a different topic and it's basically for professionals. Again, families can attend, other people can attend, but it's basically the target is for our professionals. That was the one last month, last quarter, I did a, a one on intimacy. Uh, and I offer that one sometimes as a 101 caregiver 101 program too, where it's tailored more for families. And I'll be doing that, not this coming, not this coming quarter, but the following quarter, I'll be doing that again. So July or August, that will come up as one of these 101s.
Okay. Good. Well, maybe if we visit again next quarter to look at what's coming up, then, uh, we can go over that then. Well, it's always very informative, Gay. And, and if people want to get in touch with you, what contact information can you put out there?
Okay. The best thing for me is, is by email, uh, and that's G. Wellman, W E L L M A N. G for my first name. So G W E L L M A N at A L Z Alaska dot org. Or they can always call my phone number, which is, uh, nine oh seven eight two two five six two zero. Or they can always call my phone number, which is nine oh seven eight two two five six two zero. Or they can get ahold of you and you can give them that information.
That's right. Well, and we'll find some places to, to put, I'm probably going to post this flyer somewhere. And then this program will also be on our, on our YouTube channel where we put all of our talk shows. So I'll put that information out later. But again, always a pleasure, Gaye. Thank you for taking some time to visit with us and educate on this important, on this important topic.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Like we said, always, always, always an informative program when Gaye Wellman joins us from Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska. You heard all of that information about caregiving 101. And by the way, the document that we were working from, that I said would be posted for you, there'll be a link to that when this program goes up on our YouTube channel. We'll put that in the description of the video. So all you have to do is go to youtube.com/cordovaTV. Look for the town meeting program of March 29th to be posted. And in the description of that video, there'll be a link. So you can look at this document and kind of follow along and stick it up on your fridge or your, your cork board and have this information or download it to your phone and have this information available. In addition, by the way, to the caregiving 101, they also have a number of what they call professional webinars, which Gaye was talking about, I think toward the end of our chat. They have an asset called Mind Matters Brain Works. It's support for those who have been recently diagnosed with Alzheimer's or related dementia or those living with moderate memory loss or their care partners. And there's contact information in the flyer for participating in that. They have a program called Memory Cafe that's got a monthly meeting. Art links, which presumably has to do with making art a part of this experience for sufferers or caregivers. The Brain Games Program that meets monthly. Voices of the Last Frontier, a chorus program to support people with dementia and their care partners. And then another one called Savvy Caregiver, and that's one that Gaye Wellman is involved in. It's always been a passion of hers is assisting caregivers, whether that's professionals or laypeople like family and friends. And you can find, you can see information on all of that in this flyer. I think the flyers got clickable links too, if you download it. And then all the contact information for how to get in touch with Gaye or any of the people who run these various programs is in the flyer. So again, you can download that as soon as this show goes on to the YouTube channel. We'll put it in the description for the video of this show. And with that, we'll bring things to a close on the town meeting program for March 29th. Thank you so much for joining us and a big thanks to Cordova Wireless Communications, which brings you this local talk show. And speaking of local, when you use them for your telecom services, CTC and CWC, it applies to both. When you spend the money with them, the money stays here. Doesn't go to Valdez, doesn't go to Anchorage, stays right here in Cordova, circulates through our community. And after this last crazy year, that's probably more important than it's been since the days of the spill. Not to mention all of the, I mean, literally millions of dollars that CTC and Cordova Wireless bring into the community that we don't have to create or generate. They're able to import it through their various agreements and, and we get to benefit from that. So it's great to have them in the community and we very much appreciate their sponsorship of Town Meeting on K L A M. All of your 10 a.m. hour features are going to be coming up here immediately. And we'll look forward to having you aboard for the next show on AM 1450.